We can start late, we just can't start early.
Do you have the phone?
Yeah. Yeah.
Exactly, we can start a little bit, we can just start a little bit later, make sure that I'm... Get that out of my way, come on.
I don't know if that's going to work down there, Jim. Jim, I don't know if that's going to work. The two of you together.
Is he okay?
That's not going to work. Yeah, he'll be, he'll be all right.
Did you ask him to drink?
He's got Jim down there.
Okay. Ready to go? Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, it is now 7:12 and here we are at 100 State Street in the forum for our regularly scheduled Beloit City Council meeting. First item of business is the call to order and roll call. Madam Clerk?
Roll call shows all councilors present.
Thank you, and then a second item is the pledge of allegiance, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three is the special orders of the day and announcements. Item A is recognition of the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation 2011 Main Street Award winners in the city of Beloit. Mr. Vice President, will you present the proclamations?
I'm going to read the names of the winners and if everyone would please come up to be recognized. The winner of the best downtown public improvement project built environment for the State Street Reconstruction and Gantry, the city of Beloit and the Downtown Beloit Association. The best new downtown business, Walter Lou's Paddle and Trail of Beloit. The 2011 Volunteer of the Year is Peter Gabriel. The 2011 Board Member of the Year, Deana Omen. And for the best image honorable mention, be in it. Congratulations to all of the winners.
Congratulations.
Item B is a proclamation declaring May 13th through 18th, 2012 is National Police Week and recognizing merchant police officer Fred Samp. Mr. Vice President.
An official proclamation of the city of Beloit. Whereas police services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives and whereas the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of police services and programs such as administrative services, patrol, special operations, and community crime prevention strategies involving and engaging community organizations, which are all guided by the police department's problem-solving philosophy and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these programs, services, and employees providing them and whereas sacrifices of present and past employees must be recognized and whereas Fred Samp lost his life in service to Beloit, May 28th, 1935, and will be remembered during Police Week, now therefore be it resolved that the week of May 13th through May 18th, 2012, be proclaimed as National Police Week in the city of Beloit and we call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our police department and to recognize the contributions with these officers, which these officers make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life dated the 7th day of May 2012, Charles M. Haynes, City Council President.
Thank you very much.
Just let me take a moment to thank the council and the members of the community for this proclamation and also thank you from the Fred Samp family for history buffs after the meeting. If you're interested, I have the actual badge that Fred Samp was wearing the day he was murdered in Beloit and if you notice something strange thing about it, the large hole in the middle of the badge, but I thought it was quite a historical piece and I'll have it up after the, after the meeting up and back. Thank you.
Item 3C, proclamation recognizing May as historic preservation and archaeology month in the city of Beloit. Mr. Vice President.
An official proclamation of the city of Beloit. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people and whereas Discover America's Hidden Gems is the theme for National Preservation Month and Wisconsin Archaeology Month 2012 sponsored by the city of Beloit, the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and the Wisconsin Historical Society. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the city of Beloit does hereby proclaim May 2012 as Historic Preservation and Archaeology Month and calls upon the citizens of Beloit to join others across the country in recognizing and participating in this special observance dated the 7th day of May 2012, Charles M. Haynes, Council President. And would Rick McGrath like to receive the proclamation?
Does it say any words?
Well, on behalf of the Landmarks Commission, what can I tell you? It's the, the economy is being felt in the historic districts, there's not really a whole lot of COAs being, being applied for, but to the extent that we can work to maintain standards and, and win. Since, since this time last year, we have had a couple wins. Six, Six, 630 Park, a house that was slated for demolition, we found a buyer. Genesis Construction kept their idle workers busy through the, through the slow time, saved that house. We now have new neighbors at that house that we would have had an empty lot, so that's one, one win anyway, so. But you'll hear more about that in the days ahead. Thank you very much.
And finally, 3D, proclamation declaring May 19th through 26th, 2012 as National Public Works Week.
An official proclamation of the city of Beloit. Whereas the public services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives and whereas the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, stormwater, streets and highways, public buildings, parks, recreation, transit, engineering, and solid waste collection and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depend on these facilities and services and whereas Homeland Security now recognizes public works as a first responder and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff our public works department are materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform and whereas the theme for this year is Public Works: Creating a Lasting Impression and whereas in order to better acquaint residents with public work services and programs, the department will sponsor an open house on Saturday, May 19th, 2012, at the Utilities and Engineering Building, 2400 Springbrook Court, from noon to 3:00 p.m. Now therefore, the City Council President of the city of Beloit does hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through May 26th, 2012, as National Public Works Week in the city of Beloit and calls upon all citizens to recognize the contributions made by our public works employees to the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life of Beloit residents and encourages citizens to participate in the open house. Presented the 7th day of May 2012, Charles M. Haynes, Council President.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor. Ladies and gentlemen, councilors, I really appreciate this. Accepting it on behalf of the five division directors and all the wonderful employees of the Department of Public Works. They work very hard year-round, providing a myriad of varied services, very, very high quality to the citizens of the city of Beloit. I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank them and to again reiterate the invitation that Counselor Spitzer spoke about to come to the open house. It's a week from Saturday, the 19th, from noon to 3:00. There will be displays about all of the varied public services, from transit to utilities to maintenance operations, to parks and leisure services, games and activities for young people. It's a great family event and a wonderful opportunity, not only to learn more about all the services provided by Public Works, but to thank all those employees for the great job they do on a year-round basis. So once again, thank you very much.
Item four, public hearings. Item A, Madam Clerk?
A resolution approving an amendment to the 2012 Home Investment Partnership Budget related to community development, or Community Housing Development Organization, CHODO, funding.
Ms. Christensen.
In July 2001, the city council approved the anti-governmental agreement, which guides the Rock County Home Consortium as part of that agreement. The first 15% off the top must be allocated to a community housing development organization in Beloit that since the beginning has been, those funds have been awarded to NHS and in November of last year, the council did approve, awarding those dollars to NHS. Earlier this year, HUD submitted a letter to the consortium regarding the expenditure of the, expenditure of the CHODO funds. How the whole consortium concept works is that your 15, you must have 15% of your dollars spent by the CHODO as part of your overall expenditure of funds and NHS wasn't spending those down. They didn't meet the deadline, but it was really tight. And so at that point, Janesville and Beloit started talking about whether it would be in the best interest of the consortium to split those dollars between Community Action, who is an eligible CHODO, and NHS and Community Action. We generally get between 80 and thousands, 80 and $90,000 for the CHODO. It would allow us to fund both organizations. This did go to CDA and they did also agree to split those dollars and it also does allow us to give Community Action some dollars when we took dollars from them out of the CDBG pot. And so tonight, this has been noticed as a public hearing and so it is on your agenda for, and it is on your agenda for action tonight.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing for item 4A, resolution approving an amendment to the 2012 Home Investment Partnership Budget. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? A second time, a second call for persons who would wish to speak on item 4A. Finally, a third time, anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4A. Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval, Mr. President.
Moved by Vanda Bogard, second by Lukey. Counselor comments? Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think I'm on, just to warn you, but maybe I am.
You are.
Okay. I, I just wanted to check to see if, I'm pleased to see that Community Action were receiving some of these funds and I'm wondering, Julie, I see John's also in the audience, but have they committed to complete the houses that they started in the Merrill neighborhood with these funds, is this a...
They will be working on the Merrill houses, that's why I asked John to come. I thought you guys might have questions for him on where he's at with the Merrill project. But this would allow them, I mean, it would, would be specifically allocated to the Merrill Housing Initiative, so I don't know if you want John to come up and...
We could ask John if he has an idea of when the timeline is, when that completion, projected completion date is, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Ramstead, Director of Housing Programs for Community Action. So at this stage, we have completed eight houses of the original set that we had in the Merrill neighborhood. Three of those have been, are sold and at this point in time, three of those are for sale currently. We have an offer on one of them. Two of them were part of a specific targeted work on Hall Street that were rental properties that have been completed and finished. We have six other houses that are on the docket at the moment. Three of them are active construction projects that, one will wrap up in May and then the others will be towards the end of the year, early next year at the latest. There's three other houses that are on the docket at this point in time. One, we just received funding to do through the Beloit Foundation. That's the house we're doing without federal subsidy from either Community Action or the city. That will allow us to sell that house without income restrictions and hope to attract a more middle-income professional family into the neighborhood. So we're on target. The sales side of this is still incredibly slow and so we continue to struggle with that, but we have, I think, done a lot for this neighborhood and we will have, I think, almost all, I think we'll have all the construction done probably by the first quarter of next year.
I appreciate Community Action's commitment to improvement in this neighborhood. The houses that are on the docket that are upcoming, is there commitment to complete the exteriors first where possible?
All the exteriors were done at the end of last year under a commitment we had with the city and so that's all been taken care of.
Fantastic, thank you.
Counselor Vanda Bogard?
No, I made the motion earlier.
Oh, okay, so this, all right. Have any other Counselor questions or comments? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes 7-0. Item 4B?
A resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow indoor, indoor liquor sales in a C2 neighborhood commercial district for the property located at 1451 Madison Road. Rolet Oil Company, the plan commission recommended approval, 5 to 0.
Ms. Christensen.
Paul Simon on behalf of Rolet Oil has applied for this conditional use. The Convenience Store currently sells beer in accordance with their Class A beer license and they're now wishing to sell liquor, which does require a conditional use permit. They are not planning to change the site or building at all. However, there is, I believe, a floor plan in here which shows where, that they are showing, they will have the liquor cabinet behind the registers. That's where they're intending to keep that. It's a four by, four by five foot liquor cabinet. We did send this out to the review agents. No one has had any comments or concerns. Staff, planning staff did look at the parking requirements and according to Article 8, retail sales-oriented uses must provide one off-street parking space for over 250 square feet of gross floor area. Therefore, they're required to provide at least 10 off-street parking spaces, including one van, accessible parking space that includes an 8-foot-wide access aisle. Right now, it's kind of chaotic. At that place, there's not striped parking or anything. There appears to be adequate space and so what we were, we took the plan commission and the plan commission endorsed was requiring them to actually stripe those spots. We believe they maybe have more traffic as a result of liquor sales and it would be appropriate to have that striped so that the site functions properly with proper parking area separate from the, the gas areas. So Plan Commission did hold a public hearing at their last meeting and did recommend approval of the conditional, recommend approval of the conditional use permit subject to the following conditions, which are that the conditional use permit authorizes indoor liquor sales within the existing building located at 1451 Madison Road, as shown on the floor plan submitted with the application. Prior to selling any liquor, they shall stripe the existing parking lot in a manner that identifies at least nine standard off-street parking spaces and at least one van-accessible parking space and that they shall submit a striping plan for planning staff review and approval before the striping work may begin. Three, that the applicant shall obtain and retain all applicable liquor licenses while the conditional use is established and maintained and then just the standard condition about major changes coming back through this public process and minor changes being approved administratively. And Plan Commission did recommend approval.
I'd like to open the public hearing on 4B, a resolution authorizing conditional use permit to allow indoor liquor sales in a C2 neighborhood commercial district. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on item 4B? Second call for anyone to speak on item 4B. One third and final call for anyone to speak on item 4B. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Lukey, second by Kincaid. Any Counselor questions and comments? Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Christensen, did we hear it all from the individuals that we noticed with any concerns? With this conditional use? Thank you. That's it, sorry.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item 5, citizens' participation. We've come to the portion of the meeting where citizens may come forward and speak to the council and staff. We ask that individuals refrain from personal attacks on staff and councilors and limit their speeches to three minutes. No action may be taken on any item that's brought before us this evening. We have one person who said that they wish to come forward, Melissa Stoltz.
Hi, I'm Melissa Stoltz, 421 Central Avenue in Beloit. I am here on behalf of Beloit Backyard Chickens. We really wanted to bring you fresh eggs tonight, but we don't have any yet, but we do have more petition signatures for you. We understand this is a process and we hope to hear soon about a date for a workshop. We thank you for your continued work on a chicken ordinance for Beloit. We would also like to thank the city council members who attended our showing of Mad City Chickens. We appreciate you taking the time to learn more about backyard chicken keeping. We would like to extend an invitation to anyone interested to join us for a Madison coop tour on June 2nd. We will have more details by the next city council meeting. We look forward to working with you in the coming weeks.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak under citizens' precipitation? It was easy for me to say. All right. That's right.
You did great, Charles.
Thanks. So...
Mr. President, did you want to announce, we do have a tentative date for that workshop on backyard chicken ordinance?
Oh, sure, that actually, I think that's reasonably, that's appropriate.
It is being worked on and I believe the city attorney is getting close on actually having a draft ordinance. We actually have something concrete to talk about at that session. If I want to announce the date.
Indeed, that, that workshop will be held on May 30th at 6:30 p.m. here in the forum. Thank you for reminding me of that. Mr. Arft? Okay, so, item 6, this is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Consent agenda consists of items 6A through 6I. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Motion for approval, second.
Motion by Lukey, second by Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That'll be, passes 7-0. Okay, item 7, ordinances.
A proposed ordinance to amend Section 15.06 Sub 4 Sub B 1 of the Code of General Ordinances of the city of Beloit relating to alcohol consumption and possession on streets and other public places.
Okay. You have a presentation on this?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I have a brief presentation, staff presentation, made regarding the ordinance. As Counselor, Counsel is aware, there is a, an ordinance in the municipal code that prohibits the consumption of alcohol on public streets and in other public places unless a special event sponsored usually by a local organization or group has a specific exemption, which are listed in the municipal code. There are a number of them that have been in there for many years, ranging from Riverfest to the Downtown Street Dance, Oktoberfest Celebration, and a number of others. We were approached a couple months ago by local representatives, local residents, who are very, very active in the local MDA tub run association. That's the Muscular Dystrophy Association fundraiser that's, that's handled by a local motorcycle group and they bring in anywhere between 1,500 and 2,000 riders that are participating in this charity ride every year. They have a different route every year to, to keep the circuit fresh and to show different communities, different scenery, if you will, to people that are participating in the charity ride. About four years ago, they were in Beloit but used the Riverfront Park location, so they were able to deal with their liquor license issue through the parks' application process, which is different than the one for public streets. This year, the organizers felt they'd like to showcase downtown Beloit, which obviously we were very happy to see. There's been a lot of really neat things from infrastructure to new business development in the downtown area and we always love to showcase the downtown for visitors. They're anticipating in June, with the tub run this year, having about, again, 1,500-plus cyclists that would come into the downtown area. In order to accommodate the event... cyclists that would come into the downtown area. In order to accommodate the event, they will be making, and have already made, application to close the 400 block of State Street and the 400 block of Public Avenue between East Grand Avenue and Pleasant Street. I understand the organizers have also coordinated with First National Bank to use their parking lots. Now, this event will be on a Saturday. It will be held in the afternoon after the farmer's market closes. In order for them to carry out the event, to have the refreshments that are, that are expected at these meal breaks and these rest stops, they will need it to be included in the exceptions list so they can serve beer at this particular event along with food, and they have some other activities that are also done at that time. So, before you this evening is an ordinance that amends, uh, Sub Paragraph B of this ordinance's exceptions to provide for the Tub Run and to allow one day, one weekend day each year to be set aside for this event. While we were drafting this ordinance, we also noted that Riverside Drive was still listed as the location for Riverfest. As you know, that event will be moving downtown this year, and will actually be closing a portion of Water Street, and that will become the festival grounds. So, we needed to include that new location for Riverfest, and that has been included under that Sub Paragraph B exceptions as well. So, we accommodate their move downtown, and also recommend that you approve the MDA Tub Run for the one weekend day in June for that event as well. Are there any questions by councillors? I'd be happy to answer those. Also, the local organizers of the event are here this evening as well, and if councillors would like to speak with them, they'll be happy to answer any questions you have as well.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, approve.
Second.
Motion by Lukey, second by Spicer.
Mr. President, uh, for a question, uh, I guess I should have done this for the motion.
Is there a way that we can take these two items separate?
Well, at this point, there, it's built into a single ordinance submittal, so it was intended to be acted upon jointly unless the ordinance is amended.
I think we could discuss it, but I think we'd have to have a motion to amend if you wish to separate something out.
Okay, I would, I would make a motion to amend the two events, to list those separately for discussion purposes.
And we already have a, we have a motion to approve, but it could be, there could be a motion for a separate amendment, but if I'm understanding correctly, you're, I think, wouldn't an appropriate motion be to, to strike one or the other? Or shall we have our discussion, and then make, you can make an emotion if you, if you so desire to, to remove?
But basically, I would just like to look at these two events separately, so we can have discussion on each one of them separately and vote on them separately. It's when, at the end of the day, that's what I would like to do, is vote on both of them separately.
Might be easier to start with the discussion.
Okay.
And have those separately, because the motion includes an amendment to the ordinance to accommodate two events, and an ordinance amendment would remove one of those from consideration, and then you would vote on the remaining one. The one that was taken out would not have a format then for a decision this evening, so it would have to be probably brought back at a later date.
Right.
Depending on the event, that could be a problem.
And effectively, you would be able to vote on both of them. You'd vote on the amendment to strip one out versus, um, enacting the amended ordinance. Do you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, but I guess I'm still kind of confused a little bit as to, if they're both on one docket tonight to be voted on for approval, why can't we just separate those out and vote on them separately? Because they both have gone through whatever channels they needed to to get to this point. Am I correct?
Well, if you meant the ordinance, you're going to remove one. I guess we need to ask the city attorney if the ordinance is amended and one of the events is removed from the ordinance, the one remains in the ordinance that council acts on. Council, in essence, then, would have to introduce a second ordinance, which is not on the agenda tonight, to deal with the other event. Our open, is open meetings satisfied if something like that were done, um, you know, at this, at this session? Our open, yeah, open meeting, notice?
Well, I think, uh, I think the gist of the conversations that have occurred are correct, that to separate these, there would have to be a motion to remove either the language regarding Riverfest or the language regarding the Tub Run from the ordinance in front of the council. At that point, assuming that motion were made and passed, the item that was removed would be off the table for further discussion or consideration, and would have to come back at a subsequent meeting if there was a desire to revisit it. I think, my personal opinion is it would make more sense to have any discussion councillors wanted to have as to both items, and when the discussion was done, if there was a, a desire to make a motion to remove one or the other before a final vote, make that amendatory motion at that point, see how that fares, and then proceed to what remains of the main motion.
I think that'd be reasonable for us to go ahead and have the discussion, because we can discuss each one in there on its individual merits.
Okay. Okay.
Do you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, just, I would like to ask the chief a question as it relates to the Tub Run event. Do you see any concerns that the police department may have with this event?
Well, my concerns are with requests by the organizers to have a closed parade route for a large group of motorcycles, and I'm, at this point, I'm not able to do that safely, to have that many, that many intersections covered at that time of day without extending some overtime. I can handle a static group downtown, and we can take care of two or three intersections, but not the complete route that they asked for.
Okay. Okay. Do we have an opportunity to ask, the organizers are here, do I have an opportunity to ask them a question? Because, Chief, I think it's safe to say that, as you said, you may, um, any additional, what I'm here, if I'm hearing it correctly, any additional police presence or assistance will result in overtime for the police department? Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, then I would ask, um, Mr. Barnes, is a, do you see a huge need with this many motorcycles coming to the city of need of a lot of police assistance at this event?
Well, historically, and let me say, this is the 18th year of this event. Historically, the police departments of the municipalities that participate in the event, primarily Janesville, Clinton, Albany, and Beloit, have provided, uh, police assistance, uh, when it comes to blocking off, uh, intersections controlled by stoplights. The rest of the intersections are handled by the event road guards. These are professional people that are trained on proper use of blocking off an intersection to hold back traffic while the parade comes through, and we take care of handling all the intersections except for the controlled intersections where there are streetlights. And historically, we've always had the cooperation of the police departments in controlling those intersections.
Okay.
People a little more cooperative when they see a police car there.
Okay.
But, uh, again, it's, it's been historically 18 years, we've never had a problem with having police participation in the event.
Okay, so there will be a need for police participation?
Well, we've been talking with members of the police department, not the chief, but, uh, other members of the police department, in anticipation of what our needs would be, and until we actually had approval for the location of the event, we didn't know if we were going to need the assistance of the city of Beloit, or if we're going to limit it to the town of Beloit. So, until we really had some of the logistics of the location ironed out, we couldn't take it to the next level to meet with the police department.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I, I too think this is a wonderful event. I, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to showcase the downtown Beloit, as the city manager stated. However, a couple concerns that I have is, one, uh, the need for the police assistance. I don't know how much time it'd be. I realize that this is a short timeframe that they're going to be here, but just hearing that there may need some, be some need for some police assistance, and then hearing the chief say, but if I do that, there may be a need for overtime pay, looking at where we have been and trying to minimize that, that kind of concerns me. And then the other piece is the safety, and I know we have a lot of activities going on downtown, but I, I think one of the things that I look at is the safety of having that many bikes in the city and having an event where there may be alcohol served, and we get back on the bikes and we're on our way. I, I, I struggle with that. Quite honestly, I struggle with those two issues, but I, I understand that this would be a great way to showcase the downtown Beloit, but those two things just, really, quite frankly, just really concerns me, and I, I just have to be honest with that and say that those two, those two topics just concern me. And, uh, Mr. President, that was kind of the reason why I wanted to, uh, separate the two, to have this separate discussion.
Understood.
May I respond?
You may.
Again, this is the 18th year of this event. Eighteen years, we've gone through bigger municipalities like Janesville. Uh, we've had it through Clinton and Albany and other towns, and in Beloit. Uh, eighteen years, there's never been an accident, never been a problem with that many people converging on the communities that we go to, and in eighteen years, there's never been an alcohol-related accident. So, I guess you could say, can it happen? Possibly. Has it happened? No, it has not.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Van de Bogarde?
Is the language sufficiently broad for both the Riverside or the Riverbend exception and, uh, and for the Tub Run to, uh, once, if it's approved, we don't have to come back and deal, deal with it year after year for a specific date? Is the language sufficiently broad?
That is correct. It was written to apply to the event. Occurring on an annual basis, and as we indicated, the Tub Run generally isn't here every year, but if they wanted to come back, they would have one day, weekend day available each year for their event, and the same thing with Water Street. Uh, it provides, it would be closed for the event, there's no date in there. So, first of all, Riverfest has not made a decision yet on, on where their permanent home would be, if it's going to change at all, but this simply makes it available. It also leaves the Riverside Drive language in there, so if they go back to Riverside Park, we won't have to come back and amend the ordinance again.
Thank you.
Councillor De Forest?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask you, Mr. Barnes, um, did you look at other sites downtown? Did you look at some private, uh, parking lots that this could happen? I mean, I, I share some of my colleagues' concerns. Um, I guess everything I have ever been taught is that you don't get on a motorcycle, drive into a town, drink some beer, and then get back on the motorcycle and leave. I, it's, it's a little hard for me to wrap my brain around, um, to encourage in our, in our public streets. So, I, I'm struggling with that, and I'm wondering if, if you looked at some private spaces as alternatives?
Yes, we've looked at a lot of different places. Originally, we were planning on the Rotary River Center, and logistically, it doesn't work, not enough space. We looked at Telfer Park, it was already previously reserved, so we couldn't use that. Uh, the logistics make it difficult to use the town of Beloit Park again, just getting in and out with that many people because of one entrance and one exit. Uh, we looked at other private areas, we looked at the Third Street parking lot, again, because of the number of islands in the parking lot, the restricted access in and out, it makes it difficult getting in and out. So, the direct route provided by this particular location made a lot more sense than other locations that we considered. Uh, again, I understand your concerns. Uh, I can assure you that these people riding these motorcycles, by far and above the vast majority of them, are very experienced motorcycle riders. They, uh, again, eighteen years, a record to stand on, eighteen years without an alcohol-related accident of any type. And, uh, I think that you have to say that, you know, you can always say that it could happen, but eighteen years so far, it has not happened. And we have been to bigger cities than Beloit, and it hasn't happened, and hasn't, hasn't a problem. And, you know, Clinton opens up the entire downtown, we don't, they don't rope off anything, they don't put up barricades, they don't segregate the areas for drinking and non-drinking, it's just the whole town is wide open to the group. Uh, every other year, every two years, they take it back to Clinton. Albany was the same way. The entire downtown, all the merchants share in that opportunity. We wanted to bring it on Grand Avenue downtown Beloit, but because of the timing of the end of the farmer's market, if there was any lag by the people at the farmer's market, it could result into a traffic congestion situation that would involve the people in the farmer's market. So, we chose not to, to time it that way and take a chance, and relocated over to the side street where there would not be any farmer's market traffic and parking problems. And, uh, so, yes, we've, we've considered a lot of alternatives.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Spicer?
Yeah, that's the other thing you have to understand. This is an all-afternoon deal. We ride in here at one o'clock, we're out of there by probably about one, about two, two thirty, I think, about an hour and a half, we're in there just, they're not going to sit there and drink for two or three hours. They're going to go in there, going to get a, and not everybody drinks beer. There's a lot of water and pop and other things that, that are provided, there are a lot of food. Uh, there are nonprofit organizations that sell the food, and they make money off of it. That's kind of like a fundraiser for them as well, and we're only there for about an hour and a half, and then they start packing up and heading out, so they go to the Thresher Park to attend the event. So, they're only in town for a very short period of time. Our purpose of bringing them back to Beloit, and our group, by the way, is separate from the MDA group in Janesville that organizes the event. We are all volunteers, and we, we don't have, we don't get anything out of this. We have to actually physically raise money to pay for the insurance, to pay for the porta-potties, to pay for any of the, the events, the cost of the events, the cost of the band and things like that that we provide. Those are all raised at our own expense. Actually, we have to raise the money through sales of sponsorships or signs and, and advertisers and things like that. So, uh, again, it's, it's a, the idea for, our reason for wanting to bring it to Beloit is because we are, are all very big promoters of Beloit, and we're very proud of what Beloit has done, and we chose the route to bring them down through Riverside Drive, showing off all the improvements on Riverside Drive, bringing them around, and we're taking them back out and up to, to Grand Avenue, across the bridge down Third Street. So, again, they can see all of the improvements of the Ironworks complex, and then back up to Fourth Street and out of town. So, we want to show off as much as we can of the downtown. That's our purpose from bringing them down here.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Uh, Mr. Barnes, if I, if I may have a follow-up, I certainly appreciate your desire to showcase the downtown. I just wanted to clarify your answer to Councillor De Forest. When you say you haven't had an issue with alcohol and, and riding the bikes in the last eighteen years, is that because you don't anticipate people getting back on their bikes while over the legal limit for alcohol, or because you've gotten lucky in the past?
I'm not sure how to answer that. Uh, again, people drink a beer and ride a motorcycle, and they're not putting anybody at risk, okay? Are there people that do drink more than they should? Yeah, there probably are. I mean, I'll be real honest with you. There are people that drive in cars on the street every day that drink more than they shouldn't get in the car. Do accidents happen? Yes, they do. Have they ever happened on this event? No, they have not. There have been accidents on the Tub Run. The vast majority of those accidents are caused by inexperienced bikers that get caught in the rubber band effect of when you come around a corner, you speed up, and then you slow down for the next corner, and somebody doesn't pay attention, and you run into somebody. Those are the, pretty much the limit of the accidents. There has never been, to my knowledge, has never been a, a ticket issued for an alcohol-related accident in the eighteen years this event has been going on. So, again, if you're looking for a reason to turn it down, you can certainly use that as a reason to turn this event down, but there are other communities that are begging us to bring it to them, and they won't have any of these problems whether you're talking about with bringing it to their communities, because they recognize the economic impact that it brings to the community, and they recognize the recognition it brings to the community.
Thank you.
Councillor Lukey?
Thank you, Tom, for bringing this to Beloit, or attempting to. I, I don't have any problem with the, the drinking part, because the, the people I know that are in this tend to be very responsible. My only question is, you're, and one was answered, by the hour and a half you'll be in town, but how many controlled intersections on your map will there be? One or two, or?
Oh, no, there's, uh, we'd be coming in on Riverside Drive, so if you look at all the-
Every stoplight, okay.
Every stoplight on Riverside Drive coming into town, and then going back out of town on Fourth Street. We would have several controlled intersections. Now, can we do it without the police? Um, I, I hesitate to commit because, uh, the organization that runs the Tub Run Association is different from our group, but I would certainly propose that to them. If that were the only solution to resolving this, is to not having the police control the intersections and using our road guards to do that, I would propose that, yes.
Would the police be needed there for the full hour and a half, Tom, or just, I, I don't, would that make a difference, Chief, in the short time duration for officer help or even a couple officers, and then there are other guards?
The short, the short time is, is beneficial, and I suspect that we don't need to control intersections for the whole hour and a half.
Let me explain. When we come into town, excuse me, when we come into town, depending on the size of the turnout for the event, the, the low turnout has been around a thousand bikes. High turnout has been 1,600.
bikes. High turnout has been sixteen hundred. So depending on how many bikes show up for the event, you have a certain spacing between the bikes. It can take for as little as thirty minutes for an intersection to be closed to forty-five minutes for an intersection to be closed, for all the bikes to get through. So that's about the timeframe it would be shut down. And the ones coming into town then would be shut down for that period of time. And then they would open back up, and the ones going out of town would be shut down for that same amount of time, and then opened up immediately as we, as we go by.
I guess my hope would be that we'd work with the chief then, and then to incur no overtime, but to get the main corners if we could. Thank you.
We'd like to do that, too.
Any further questions or counselor comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Did we need to suspend the?
Oh, we need to suspend the rules. Okay, so do we have a motion to suspend the rules, then?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Lupeke, any second.
Second.
Second by Spicer. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion to suspend the rules passes seven-zero. Now, the, we believe we already have a motion and second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, all opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes five-two, with Levy and, and DeForest in dissent. Number eight on the agenda is the appointments. This will be the appointments for the council, for boards and commissions. After receiving all of the councilor's committee requests and, and attempting to reconcile all conflicting requirements, have made the following appointments. To the Alcohol Beverage Licensing Control Committee, Counselor Levy. To the Appointment Review Committee, myself and Vice President Spicer. To the Business Improvement District of Downtown Beloit Association, Counselor Vanda Bogart. To the Board of Community Action, Counselor Spreitzer. To the Community Development Authority, Counselors Levy and Lupeke. To the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, Counselor Vanda Bogart. To the Disabled Parking Committee, Counselor DeForest. To the Equal Opportunities and Human Relations Committee, Counselor Kincaid. To the Landmarks Commission, myself. To the Metropolitan Planning Organization, Counselor Kincaid. To Parks, Recreation, and Conservation Advisory Committee, Counselor DeForest. To the Plan Commission, Counselor Kincaid. The Traffic Review Committee, Counselor Finally, we're at item nine, Counselor Activities and Incoming Events. Start with Counselor Vanda Bogart.
The only thing I would have tonight, Mr. President, would be a big thank you to all of the poll workers who this year in the city and in the state of Wisconsin are getting a real workout. You will recall that tomorrow is a primary election opportunity for us to participate. But whether you do or don't participate, the, the poll workers along with or and through Rebecca Hausmann's Clerk's Office are there from seven in the morning until late at night. And they're going to be there on the fifth of, or seventh, excuse me, eighth of May, and then the fifth of June, and then in August, and then again in the fall. So they're really, really excellent examples of volunteering for civic service, and I would commend them.
Thank you. Counselor Lupeke?
I was fortunate to be at the Gaston School last week to participate in a partnership between the school district and the city. And counsel person, Sheila DeForest, gave a very nice presentation with the help of some students. And, but it was a very nice event, and it was a, it was a nice partnership. So I was happy to be there. I also want to point out to the public that earlier this evening, there was a proclamation for an National Public Works Week. And I think it's very important that the public understand and recognize that our city manager for the last year and his five department heads have taken on the added responsibility of Public Works Director. The city manager has done that, and all department heads have assumed a greater responsibility and role in the city and saved quite a bit of money for the taxpayers. So I wanted to point that out. Other than that, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. And Counselor Levy?
I have nothing.
Counselor DeForest?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to share the activities I was able to participate in since our last meeting. One of my favorites was attending Grinnell Hall's hee-haw show. It was wonderful. Very talented residents who attend Grinnell Hall and who were performing for us. And I thoroughly enjoyed that. I also appreciated being able to attend the Life Course Initiative for Healthy, Life Course Initiative for Healthy Families Community Action Plan. And, and just to make sure the community is aware that this is a, a group that has developed a plan to work on addressing the birth disparity for African-American infants in our city. We have a, a significant difference in deaths of African-American babies in our city, and this group is working to address it. This is a very serious issue, and I appreciate their hard work on it. Was pleased to be able to attend the presentation about what they're planning to, to do to address it, and would like to pledge my support to, to help that work. I appreciated attending the, the downtown Business Associations Awards Program, and was especially thrilled to see Mark Preschel's reaction to the receipt of his award. But certainly want to recognize all of the individuals who make downtown Beloit such a special place, and for the work that they do to make our city shine. And I thoroughly enjoyed Arbor Day. It was wonderful. Some very excited kids out there watching the planting of a tree. It took me back to some fond memories of an Arbor Day I had as a young child, watching the planting of a tree. And that, that really makes an impression on you, to appreciate the trees in our community. Once again, we are Tree City USA, something to be very proud of. The trees in our community really make it a special place. So I appreciate all of Bruce's work over the years, and look forward to working with Mr. Fergar, our new urban forester, and would like to appreciate and welcome him as new staff to the city. And I am looking forward to attending the DPW Open House. If you have little kids, you have to take them. They will love climbing on the big machines. So get them out there for that. It's a very fun event. Again, it's May nineteenth from twelve to three. And thank you to all of our DPW workers for the incredible job they do to keep our cities running. We don't even realize behind the scenes what they're doing to make our, our streets safe, to make our water safe, to improve our environment and our built environment. So thank you to all the Department of Public Works employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kincaid?
I attended the Mad City Backyard Chicken movie, and it was the highlight of the month so far. I only hope that by the end of the month, I don't have backyard chicken fatigue. But I expect we'll all be talking about that in a little while.
Thank you. Vice President Spreitzer?
I wanted to extend congratulations to the Beloit College class of 2012, who will have their commencement next Sunday and are currently wrapping up their finals. So congratulations to all of the graduates.
I have nothing today. So item ten, we, we had scheduled a code enforcement update, but I believe in the interest of time, we have determined to, to lay that over till the next meeting. So item eleven, boards and reports from boards and city officers. Item A.
A resolution approving acknowledgement of public authority responsibility between the City of Beloit and the Ho-Chunk Nation.
And the staff presentation?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this matter involves a, a resolution seeking council's approval for the manager to enter a, an intergovernmental agreement on behalf of the city with the Ho-Chunk Nation. The, the agreement, if it's approved, would make certain roads in the vicinity of, of the property acquired by the Ho-Chunks eligible, possibly eligible for possible future BIA funding. There's no definite guarantee of funding, but it, it gets us in line, if you will, for that funding. This opportunity was brought to the city's attention, thanks to, to efforts by Mr. John Schrader, who I believe is Director of Transportation.
Transportation Planner.
Transportation Planner for the Ho-Chunk Nation. He's been kind enough to travel down here to be with us tonight in case there's any questions that, that I couldn't answer, which I'm sure wouldn't be a, a hard challenge for you to meet. The, the other thing I would like to point out is that the original resolution in the packet, somewhat unusual on my part, I got to the resolution well ahead of, of the final discussions on the matter. The original resolution only contemplated two-point-four miles, I believe, of Colley Road as being subject to the agreement. As we discussed and explored the opportunity further, we realized that other roadways in the area could be included in the agreement. And you were presented earlier with a revised resolution, and the agreement itself covers not just that area on Colley, but the areas on State Line, Willowbrook, and, and Gateway. So it would, again, give us an opportunity to be eligible for some of these funds. It appears to be, you know, a no, no downside type of situation. But I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have, and I'll turn it back to the president.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Move of approval, Mr. President.
No second.
And this would be of Colley Road, Willowbrook, Gateway, and State Line Road, not just the original.
Right, yeah. The revised resolution. So we have a motion by Vanda Bogart, second by DeForest. Any counselor questions or comments? Counselor Vanda Bogart, did you have?
No, no, I-
All right, so let's go ahead and get Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment. I'd like to thank the nation for looking for creative ways to help us finance this development of Colley Road. So thank you for that. We look forward to continuing to work with you to develop the site the way it needs to for this project. So thank you. If you could take that back to the nation, let them know how pleased we are that they're looking for those resources so that we can continue to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further counselor questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Eleven-B.
A resolution accepting Jeffrey J. Jacobson's offer to purchase lots two ninety-one and two ninety-two of Poff's Forest, Fourth Sun Valley in the City of Beloit.
Staff presentation?
A number of years ago, Woodman's donated a piece of land to us that is roughly bounded by Burton Street, Frederick Street, Staborn Drive, and Meredith's Drive. And as you know, we've made several efforts in the past to market this land to developers. The most recent effort failed in the fall of 2010. I think we had two tax credit applications that were submitted on this land that did not get funding. The owner of 2015 Frederick, which is Jeffrey Jacobson, has expressed an interest in purchasing land to expand his yard and own enough land to comply with the zoning ordinance regarding an addition that he placed on his garage. The western edge of this land has eight vacant lots in a row. There's a map in here that shows that the lots, it's about the third and fourth lots from the south, are what he's interested in purchasing. The sale price, the offer to purchase is $2,000. What we're, the way we looked at it is, we're essentially creating a buffer if we ever would get development there. The past development proposals didn't include this land. So we don't think there's really a downside to selling some land and getting it back on the tax rolls, having it be taxable land, because we haven't had a lot of interest in this land. So we, staff is recommending approval, and the money received from this land sale would go to the general fund land sale account.
Motion for approval, second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Motion by Lupeke, second by Levy. Counselor comments and questions? Counselor DeForest?
Thank you, Mr. President Haines. I, I'm just wondering, I was excited to see this individual step forward and say that he's interested in the lots as an individual homeowner. Have we considered proposing that to other adjoining homeowners here in this property?
We haven't. I mean, we can, but we haven't, like, contacted them. It isn't an easy thing to divide off. As you see, you know, he took two, which then goes halfway into other people's yards. So it does make it difficult to try to figure out how to parcel that all out. So that's the downside of it, is trying to figure out how to do that. I'm expecting that the word will get out on that street. We may get more interest in it. I mean, I think it may just create its own, you know. We have, you know, in the past, had people ask, like, a number of years ago, and we'd always said, no, you know, because we had some development proposals there. But they've kind of dried up after the last two didn't get approved through WETA tax credits. We haven't had anyone express interest in the parcel. And it does give a logical buffer so that you can then, if you, if you would develop some kind of multifamily in the future, or even something, you know, some, more dense than single family, it would give you some buffer there, which would help the neighbors. And we are finding that people are kind of almost doing little community gardens and stuff along the edges, kind of encroaching a little bit anyway.
I saw that.
Which I guess are not hurting anybody. But, so I mean, I think there might, we may just hear from more landowners as time goes on, just because this, if this sale actually happens. But if the council desires us to, you know, make a more active pitch to the people, we can do that.
Well, right now, I, I know, I know in the Staborn Report, it said that this particular part wasn't part, wasn't included in the agricultural lease that we, we just committed to. Are the, and then based on the drawing that we have here in our packets, so this, this strip of land that's adjoining or budding these properties, are those lots planned to be used for agricultural, part of the agricultural lease? Because that certainly complicates it, and then it might make sense to wait until we finish that agricultural lease.
Yeah, I don't know. Larry, do you know? I mean, I know Drew asked about those specific, but do you know if the rest of the parcels are part of that farm lease?
We'll check on it. As my understanding, they were.
Okay.
These two were carved out of the lease because we had the offer to purchase. Since it was from an adjacent resident, obviously, we went along. Otherwise, we would not have sold them separately because they'd be landlocked. The only way we could sell those is to an adjoining resident that has access from either side.
And I do think the two lots where you can see there's trees, I don't think, you know, half of those lots aren't part of the farm lease.
Right.
I believe. Mike had said. But the rest of it, I, you know, I couldn't say.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Kincaid?
I'm, I'm glad this came back to the city council. I was on the Board of Appeals when this was first presented, where the, the landowner had built, expanded his garage without a permit and doubled the size of it. And there was just no way that the, the staff or the, the board could figure out a way to make it work, except at the very end, someone said, maybe you can buy land from the adjacent landowner. And so I'm happy that this came out. The landowner was frustrated, but appreciative of the way he was treated, and I think very fairly and respectfully. So thank you.
Any other counselor comments or questions? Right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Okay, now we on to eleven-C, and this is going to be the next seven resolutions. We'll all be handled under one staff report. We'll get separate, have separate motions and roll call votes on each one of these. But at this point, we'll go ahead and have the staff report for all of them.
Thank you, Mr. President. That, that is correct. I'll be quite brief on these resolutions that we do have with us this evening. Mike Harrigan, he's with Ellers and Associates. They're the city's financial advisors, and he will be presenting the, the details of our financing plan for this year. plan for this year. As the council knows, each year about this time, the city generally enters the bond market to issue bonds to fund our capital improvement program for the year. And that's the intent and purpose of these resolutions you're going to consider this evening, is to fund the 2012 capital budget for the city that was adopted by the council last fall. There's a number of resolutions here. There are several initial resolutions that are necessary to comply with Wisconsin statutes that set forth the amount and purpose of the end of the components of the bond issue. And there's actually two resolutions here, one that sort of summarizes the general obligation portion of our financing plan, and also includes a component for a refunding that we've identified that will allow the city to save approximately about $123,000 on some existing debt that we can refinance at a lower interest rate to generate that savings. And that amounts to about $3.8 million of the proposed $7,375,000 general obligation bond issue that you'll be considering this evening. We also have a CDA lease revenue bond component of the financing plan for this year, in the amount of, let's see here, I think it was $1,655,000, excuse me. And that's to fund the improvements that have been identified for the city's tax increment district in the downtown area for this year. And the reason we chose to do lease purchase bonds, or lease revenue bonds, on that portion of the financing plan is to preserve a portion of the city's bonding capacity for that purpose. And this debt doesn't count against the city's general obligation debt issuance authority. I did want to point out that we had earlier this evening scheduled for the CDA to act on the lease revenue bonds. Unfortunately, we were unable to meet a quorum of the CDA this evening, so they did not take any action on this. However, we did contact the city's bond council, and she suggested that the council consider the lease revenue bond portion of the financing on a contingent basis, subject to later CDA approval. And we are going to try to schedule a meeting on Wednesday this week for the CDA to reconvene and consider the issuance of the lease revenue bonds. And with that, I'll turn this over to Mike Harrigan with Ellers and Associates. And again, Mike will go through more of the details of the proposed financing plan for
Thank you, Paul, and thank you, Mr. President, council members. Paul has done a good job of summarizing the two issues that are before you this evening. I want to make some brief references to the planning document that we had submitted to the council. This is a pre-sale report that we prepare in advance of these kinds of issues. I want to point out that in the case of the $7,355,000 general obligation issue, this is going to be a direct obligation of the city. Its security, the underlying security, is the pledge of property taxes to pay for the principal and interest associated with the debt. The various purposes that are here under state law have to be grouped generically into various categories of intended purpose. And so we have street improvements, parks and public grounds, fire equipment, which is predominantly communications-related equipment. We have the advanced refunding of two existing outstanding issues. And so there are separate initial resolutions that have to be adopted and approved by the council for each of the intended purposes under the Wisconsin statutes. The bonds are scheduled to be paid over a 20-year period. However, within that 20-year period, we have structured the issues so that you're actually paying for the equipment items over a shorter period of time, 15 years, to reflect useful life. And similarly, the refunding is only expected to go out coincidental with the bonds that you're refinancing, so that you're not stretching that out any further than where you were before. I want to mention that, again, the city will conduct this as a competitive sale, and, which means that you will be offering the opportunity to underwriters throughout the nation, really, to bid against one another for the right to buy the bonds. These bonds will be rated by Standard &amp; Poor's. Your debt has been previously rated by Standard &amp; Poor's at the A-plus level, and so you'll be seeking a reaffirmation of that, of that rating. With regard to the impact of the borrowing, as had been mentioned in our report, this borrowing is expected to actually not have a negative impact on the tax levy or tax rate because of the fact that the city is paying off debt, its existing debt, at a little faster clip than what you'd be, being required to pay this new debt. You're already still going to be in a position to reduce your levy and your tax rate, even with the addition of this new money issue. In addition, the refinancing we have projected, as was mentioned by Paul, is expected to result in savings, and this is net savings after costs, of about $122,000, $123,000 in future dollars. And it's about an average of $10,000 to $12,000 per year savings to the city. We've also provided as part of the packet, a projection of the impact of debt, not only of this issue, but of future issues, so that you can see that this is done within context of other things that you may have to do going forward, so that we're thinking ahead and wanting to try to structure the issues so that you can afford to accommodate future borrowing within your plans. Finally, with regard to the CDA issue, unlike the, the general obligation issue, this is a revenue bond, and as such, this one is not paid directly by the full property tax pledge of the city. It is paid by revenues from a specific tax increment district, tax increment district number five, to be specific. In our report, we did provide a projection of the revenue that would be generated by that district available to pay not only the current proposed issue's debt, but also all existing debt that's outstanding. And what that pro forma shows is that there will be more than sufficient amount of revenue. There's a coverage that we expect over and above the amount of principal interest that will come due to the tune of about 120%. So we would expect to have about 120% of revenues available to make all of the debt payments. This is going to mean that the city will have, based on our projections, the ability to close this district a little early, about a year early ahead of time, and have a positive fund balance to distribute to the other taxing jurisdictions at that time. This issue, unlike the GO issue, would be offered through a direct placement. We are recommending that this one go through Robert W. Baird because of the fact of their retail capability, and this being a double tax exempt issue is of benefit primarily to Wisconsin residents. And because of their network of retail outlets here, we think that they'll be able to get us the best negotiated price for this issue. With that, Mr. President, I am happy to answer questions that any members of the council may have on any of these resolutions that are before you.
Thank you. Any councillor questions or comments? Councillor DeForest.
Thank you for answering the questions that we had earlier when we reviewed this. I did forget to ask, do you think it's likely that we, we will be able to do the refinancing piece that we're hoping to, or, I mean, if that does, if that does not occur, we'll just pull that out, is that correct?
Yes, and we've had that occur once in a while with some of our clients, where we went into a refinancing with market conditions that were prevalent at the, at the time that we had the vote initially. But because of market movement, interest rates moved away, and it, prior to sale, it was our projection that you wouldn't be able to save the dollars that would make it worthwhile. And so we would, in that condition, we would contact the city manager and the finance director and recommend that the issue be pulled, and get their blessing on whether to do that or not, and therefore would reduce the size of this thing accordingly. Now, having said that, we're very pleased to report that, at least today, in today's market, the interest rates that we're seeing from sales that are occurring, in fact, today, actually are better than what we're showing you here. So at least the market today is in a good place, and so hopefully it'll hold, and we can't guarantee it, but we're, we're thinking it's a very strong possibility we'll be able to achieve these results.
Right, and it looked like the, the pieces of debt that made the most sense to try to include in this and refinance were the 2006 State Trust Fund. There wasn't anything else that we looked at?
Correct, we looked at all of your outstanding debt, and these were the two that resulted in a savings that met your parameters. Typically, especially for an advanced refunding, we would recommend you proceed in the event that you can realize a savings equal to at least 2% of the principal being refunded or more, and this does exceed the 2% level. Others that we looked at did not, and so we did not bring those to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I think it's time for resolutions. Resolution eleven C.
Initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $2,315,000 for street improvement projects.
Do we have?
Second.
Motion by Loopkey, second by Levy, and I believe we need a roll call vote for this.
DeForest.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Spritzer.
Aye.
Haines.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Loopkey.
Aye.
Vanda Bogart.
Aye.
Item eleven D.
Initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $345,000 for park and public grounds projects.
Motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Levy, and second by Spritzer.
DeForest.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Spritzer.
Aye.
Haines.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Loopkey.
Aye.
Vanda Bogart.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. And item eleven E.
Initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $895,000 for fire department equipment.
Motion.
Also move second.
DeForest, and Loopkey seconds.
Vanda Bogart.
Loopkey.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Haines.
Aye.
Spritzer.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
DeForest.
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Item eleven F.
Initial resolution authorizing not to exceed $3,820,000 of general obligation refunding bonds.
Motion.
Motion.
Kincaid.
Second.
DeForest.
Vanda Bogart.
Aye.
Loopkey.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Haines.
Aye.
Spritzer.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
DeForest.
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Eleven G.
A resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues.
Move approval.
Levy.
Second.
And Loopkey seconds.
DeForest.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Spritzer.
Aye.
Haines.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Loopkey.
Aye.
Vanda Bogart.
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Eleven H.
Resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed $7,375,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2012A.
Move approval.
Levy.
Second.
And Spritzer seconds.
DeForest.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Spritzer.
Aye.
Haines.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Loopkey.
Aye.
Vanda Bogart.
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, is that H or I?
Well, do, I know.
Okay, all right.
The initial resolution authorizing the issuance of lease revenue bonds of the Community Development Authority of the city of Beloit, series 2012.
Move approval, Mr. President. Contingent of the Community Development Authority Action Leader this week approving the same. Second.
Vanda Bogart moves, and second by Loopkey.
Vanda Bogart.
Aye.
Loopkey.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Haines.
Aye.
Spritzer.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
DeForest.
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
And eleven J.
A resolution approving the agreement between the city of Beloit and Wisconsin Professional Police Association Law Enforcement Employee Relations Division, WPPA LEER.
City Minister of Health.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is actually our final collective bargaining agreement. We have some follow-up discussions with the police supervisors. We have a meeting of our relationship with them. As the clerk indicated in the title, this agreement is with the Wisconsin Professional Police Association that represents the city's police patrol officers. As you can see from the summarization table that follows the staff report, this agreement in many respects parallels, in both scope and cost, the collective bargaining agreement that you recently approved with the city's firefighters. There are, were a number of language changes in here. Most of those are not economic in nature. They codified existing practice or eliminated old outdated phrases that were in the document. The two substantive sections have to do with the salary increases, which exactly parallel those awarded to the firefighters, and the payment of the employee portion of the pension contribution, which also parallels the agreement we made with the firefighters to begin paying 3% of the pension contribution immediately, and the State Trust Fund mandated, the state retirement system mandated pension payment effective January 1, 2013. There was also some minor adjustments to the salary schedule in here that are economic. We added a 25 cent increase at a 20-year step, which is new, and a 50 cent increase at 25 years, which is new. As I noted in the Beloit report, these costed out to an annualized cost of about $14,000 a year, and that was very, very similar in number to some of the specialty pay and paramedic adjustments that we had made in the fire contract. So once again, in scope and cost, very, very equivalent, although obviously the issues are different from department to department, and some of the wording changes, et cetera, that were made to keep the contract current. That really summarizes the conclusion of those negotiations. Of course, this is a two-year packet, as were the other collective bargaining agreements for calendar 12 and 13, so the city will remain synchronized with the state's biannual budget cycle. Again, Mr. President, councillors have any questions, I'd be happy to address those at this time.
Motion for approval. Second.
Motion by Loopkey, second by Levy. Councillor, comments and discussions? Councillor DeForest.
Oh, I think I'm just from the previous, but I'm, I'm happy to see that this was negotiated.
Okay.
Here we go.
All right. Any others? Councillor Vanda Bogart.
I think I've been given assurances already by staff, but I want to make sure that, I'm certain that any new hires, just as in the fire contract, any new hires are contributing fully to the Wisconsin retirement system as of the date of their hire.
That is correct. That was effective July 1 of 2011. All public safety employees hired after that date pay the full, which is now 5.9% pension contribution, effective with their date of hire.
Okay, thank you.
And entrance into the pension system.
Right.
There's a delay before you actually enter the system.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Item 12 on the-
Move approval.
Any second?
Aye.
Okay, so motion by Levy, second by Loopkey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We are adjourned.
Thank you very much. We moved through an extensive agenda in a very uncoordinated, inefficient way.